You can hear from my speakers away the air?
A little bit, yeah.
Okay.
I can't hear Mike hardly, you're real low.
I have to use the microphone in the council chamber. If I go to the microphone in the computer, it'll mess us up.
Oh, okay. It's getting hard to hear him too.
All right, well, through the meeting, if Carlos isn't talking, I'll turn on my mic on and see if that'll work.
About a minute and 30 seconds and we'll get started.
Give me, give me, don't say anything, I'm gonna try it and see if it'll work. Can you hear me better now?
Yes, I can.
Okay, then we know what we gotta do.
Yeah, I can hear you, we're good, Mike.
Okay, we're not getting your feedback, so maybe I'll just leave it on. I don't know, some people might think it's better if you can't hear me, I don't know. Business tonight. Oh, business. Twenty more seconds.
I'm gonna give you the union business, you know my name.
I'm not nervous yet, the 7:30 meeting will probably be the telling tale.
Ah, you're gonna be fine, you're gonna be fine.
All right, it is 6:30. We have a study session, but before we start, I guess we'll call the meeting order, but we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, ever and ever. All right, welcome everybody. Mr. City Manager, would you like to speak?
Actually, I need to call Rolf.
Rolf, I'm sorry, thank you, Carrie, Rolf, call please.
Ready?
Yes.
Councilpersons do pray. Here, Higgins.
Here.
Elsie.
Here.
Ross. You're muted, Ms. Ross.
Here, thank you.
Tobin.
Here.
And Celcedo.
Yes. Here.
Mayor Kearns is here. Okay, all yours, Carlos.
All right, here we go, we have a study session in regards to the American Recovery Plan Act. Mr. Kreisand, you wanna speak?
All right, thank you very much, Council President. So, here we are tonight to talk about the City of Lincoln Parks program for the American Rescue Plan Act. So this, let me make sure this is working here, all right. So ARBA, as it's often called, became law on March 11th, 2021. Part of this legislation, federal government was gonna provide $350 billion in funding to state, local, territorial, and tribal governments. And out of this funding, entitlement units of government, such as us, total were awarded $45.6 billion. Of that, we were awarded $19.1 million. So, to try and, I think we come to grips with this, $19.1 million out of a roughly $24 million general fund, it's a significant shot in the arm for us. But, just to be safe here, we'll go through some of the stuff we can, we can use this for. So the legislation calls out four specific areas where the federal funding can be used. So, one area is addressing the economic impact of the pandemic, which would include aid to small businesses and harder hit, what they call in hard-hit industries, taking hospitality, tourism. Another area is responding to workers performing essential work during the pandemic. This would be doing some kind of hazard pay, premium pay for essential workers. Another area that we can use funds for is to provide local government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue in comparison to the last whole fiscal year prior to the pandemic. And then the last one, which is the biggie, is to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. So just kinda quickly going through those four things. Addressing negative economic impact, we could use the funds to aid the small businesses, we could, we could do some sort of grant or loan program. But looking back, when the initial CARES Act came out, we allotted $300,000 for aid to small businesses. As of today, we still have $85,000 available in that fund. So again, continue to spread the word on that, that funding's still there, we do need to get it out. Responding to workers performing essential work, this would be a hazard pay bonus in most respects. Back in September, we did provide a hazard pay bonus to police and fire. Those were a group, a group of employees who had been deemed essential and also exempt from the extended family medical leave that was provided in the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. So, they weren't under the same kind of restrictions that most general employees were during that time. The third area, the revenue replacement, this area is a little bit vague, but what has happened is there's a formula that we can use to try and figure out exactly how much revenue the pandemic has cost us. And this, this amount of revenue would then be the cap by which we can use the funding to do general government services, and we'll get into that more in just a little bit here. And then finally, infrastructure. So the legislation specifically calls out water, sewer, or broadband. Is, I've noted here that it's interesting that roads specifically were missing from the legislation. Based on that, we need to assume that road projects that aren't part of water, sewer, or broadband projects would not be eligible for this funding. Though, it's, it's widely believed that if we have to remove a road to, to do the water, sewer, or the broadband, we can replace the road as part of that project using this funding. So other things that are ineligible, any kind of general expenditures beyond the amount allotted through the revenue replacement provision, any type of use that's not specifically identified in the act would have to be ineligible. Specifically identified in the legislation as ineligible is to use the funds for pension funding, or to pay down any other debt service. Using the funds as a source for matching other federally funded grants, we can't do, or just in general to use it for different reserve accounts. Basically, they want us to put the money out, they want us to help the economy recover, get people back to work. So, kinda looking through everything, we still have $85,000 in CARES Act funding allocated for the Small Business Grant Program. So I think we need to focus on, on the other three areas of eligible uses. We're talking revenue replacement, premium pay, and infrastructure. So, using a tool provided by the Government Finance Office, there's an association, GFOA. Our finance department, Lisa Griggs and her team, calculated that the city's lost revenue was approximately $1.48 million due to the pandemic. So, that's $1.48 million that we can use to do things that we otherwise wouldn't be able to do, and we'll get into a little list of projects in a minute. To provide a second hazard pay bonus to police and fire, if we did it at $1,000, we would be spending $67,000, which would be the second area we could focus on here. And then currently, we're looking at $14 million for infrastructure improvements. I'll note that right now, there's $3.5 million not allocated, because at the end of this year, we're able to do another calculation to see where we're at as far as revenue, revenue loss and revenue replacement. So some of that money may, we might wanna use for other kind of illustrious projects that we weren't able to accomplish yet. But if not, then we can put that $3.5 million right into infrastructure again. So I'll get into the revenue replacement side of the program. We can't, again, we can't use it to bolster the fund balance, we need to be able to spend the money. So, proposing to use this fund for various needed and outstanding projects, kinda the goal here is to accomplish things that we know we need to accomplish but haven't been able to. Things that are gonna help operations, things are gonna make, that are gonna make an impact, things that are gonna be safe, and things that could generally, in the long run, maybe even save us some money. So the first one on the list, and this is no indication of priorities, it's just what was put down on the list, there's no rhyme or reason to this. So the first one on the list here is to rewrite the zoning code. Back in the fall of 2019, we adopted the new master plan, so we need to rewrite the zoning code so that it matches. The, the master plan is the, the kind of foundation by which we, we make land use decisions, and land use decisions are made through zoning, so we need to make sure they're matching. One of the biggest complaints we received is about the city website. This is coming from citizens, coming from staff. I'm, I'm looking right now at Carrie, and she's, she's smiling, because I know how much, and Councilwoman Ross as well. Our website needs significant, significant.
Improvement.
Improvement, we'll say. And then another big, big ticket item here, this is probably the biggest ticket item out there as far as general fund expenditures go, and this is the animal shelter. This is finally doing Phase 2 of the animal shelter, something we've needed to do for a long time. But at that kind of a price tag, it's been kind of out of reach. We can finally do that. If you've been at City Hall in a while, the windows are in desperate need to be upgraded. I know at least up here on the second floor, I'm thinking two offices here, that five of the six windows are screwed shut, because if we don't do that, they just fall down, and it gets really cold in the winter. And they have, so we're, we're throwing money out the window right now with the windows we have. We can save money by spending money that makes sense. The City Hall generator project, this is one that has been long going on, we have a state grant to do this. However, the state grant didn't take into account the fact that we need to do significant electrical upgrades to be able to make City Hall generator ready. So we've got money budgeted there to do so. The police department has a number of projects they need to be, need to get done, talking about the shooting range, there's a couple bathroom projects that need to be done, because our police deserve to have nice bathrooms that don't make them feel embarrassed when they go into them. And also, there's some other external, exterior projects there to help preserve the police vehicles in the parking area. Couple of our big longstanding things, the community center pool, it's time to remove it, and so we've got money budgeted there. The Palm Park waiting pool, that needs to be removed, so we've got money budgeted there, it's $100,000 between the two, and oddly enough, the waiting pool is actually more expensive, but that's due to the, the type of concrete that it is. And then lastly, we need to be able to try and, we need to be able to try and really, really get some energy in our downtown, and really try and get movement. And so, working with the DDA, we're looking at doing what we're calling downtown placemaking. These are things, I know they've got a couple pedestrian alleys they wanna inject some life into, we've got a couple other projects that can really inject some energy into the downtown, and so, at $125,000, we're gonna be able to do some really good things, and really get a good facelift on some of these spots downtown. All right, and then, infrastructure. And this is gonna be a really, really good thing. The bulk of our funding is gonna go towards addressing some of these longstanding infrastructure needs. Two major purposes we're looking at with this. First is correcting problems within the system that have long been needed to be corrected. The second is to limit the impact of the cost of these projects on the ratepayers. We know, we all saw the, the presentation last fall from Plant Moran about rates. We do know our rates are too low. But thankfully, with this, this shot in the arm, we don't have to do the same type of rate increase, or even near the type of rate increase we were intending. So, getting through those right now, we've got $14 million that we're looking at, and those are some of the big items. We're talking replacing both the Lincoln and Emmens Pump Station, those both come at a price tag of $4 million. We have significant upgrades at the retention basin that we need to do, and that price tag is estimated at $2 million. We have some work at the Radipal Pump Station that we need to do, and that's gonna come in at about a million. And then, we all know about the lead service lines. We've got 20 years to do this, it's gonna cost us at least a million a year, so this is gonna help give us a good three-year jumpstart on getting that done. Hopefully, that buys us enough time that the feds can continue to find ways to help fund these kinds of, kinds of needed things that we're being forced to pay for, that we wouldn't have planned on 10 years ago. So really, like, this is going to influence the water and sewer rates. When, when you guys saw the, the presentation back in the fall, you saw the significant costs we had. This takes $14 million of costs out of those revenue requirements over these next couple years. However, you know, we, we don't have a definite, definite number yet. We, we did meet with Plant Moran today to start going over how, how this is gonna affect. And the methodology of the rate study that we did is still valid, but because of this, the numbers that were used aren't, aren't accurate anymore. So we're gonna continue to work with Plant Moran using their model to, and we're gonna identify what the actual needed revenue for the future is. The nice thing about this, we are gonna have to raise rates, let's, let's be clear. But we don't have to raise them nearly as badly as we were going to, and it's going to allow us to be in a position where we can continue to address our infrastructure. It's an old system, it's a very old system, and we need, we need to address a lot of issues. So we do have to remember that there was approximately $39 million needed in sewer improvements over the next 20 years. We are addressing over 25% of that with this funding, which is significant, but we are still going to need to increase rates to cover more of the infrastructure needs. So that's, that's basically my presentation, the, the general plan from the administration. I'm gonna stop my screen share, and I'm gonna open it up to questions.
Anybody have questions for Mr. City Manager?
If I, if I can, Council President?
Mr. Councilman Higgins, please.
Yeah, we talked about bringing, doing some updates to City Hall. I have to ask, I know the basement has flooded consistently now several times. Last week, it was above the second stair. Is there anything we can do about that with this funding?
I'm thinking, I'm looking at that as potentially a second-year project with the revenue replacement. Remember, we've got $3.5 million that has not yet allocated, and some of that, again, when we recalculate at the end of this year, some of that might go back into the replacement, the revenue replacement. And then whatever's left will, will go back into infrastructure. So, depending on what's left, it's definitely a project we can dabble.
Through the chair?
No, that would be.
Yes, Mr. Councilwoman Tobin.
Is there anything, I didn't see anything mentioned about broadband on that, we're not going to be looking at expanding on broadband?
We'll get, we'll actually get to that during the regular meeting, because CARES Act funding is also allowed, what we're allowed to use CARES Act funding for some broadband.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else?
Through the chair, please.
Yes, Councilwoman DePry.
James, this may not be, this is not the discussion time, but this is just a quick question. The infrastructure fixes, how will that affect the flooding that we have?
So, I, I, if I told you it was gonna stop all flooding, I'd, I'd be lying, right? Again, it's still an old system, but what this will do is it will allow the system to operate more efficiently. Should it, should we have a rainfall like we did, not like we did, but like our neighbors did two weeks ago, I, we could probably put $35 million into the system, and it's not gonna handle seven inches of rain, right?
Right.
Because we're, it's not, it's not that we're really expanding much of the capacity of the system, we're making it operate better. John Hennessy's on the line, and he could probably explain it a little better than I can, but it, it should address some of the flooding concerns.
That, that's, that's true, James, if I could jump in, I would just like to, what James and the administration, and what we're looking to focus on are the Emmens and Lincoln Pump Station and the retention basin, and the three of them can have worked through unison together, and these are three of the most critical infrastructure components that we've been worried about. They've really exceeded their life cycle, the two stations were built in '38 and '42, and now we will get a total revamping of them. And we will be able to, I think, lessen basement flooding, because we will be able to operate at, in a high efficiency, where we're really, we really think that the pump stations are operating at about 70%, just because of their age, and that will move water quicker to the basin, which will lower the level of water within local districts.
Thank you.
Right, and, and a lot of, a lot of, with these projects too, it's not so much about preventing flooding, prevent, making the flooding completely better, it's a lot of the worry, what can happen if these, these three elements go down? If these three elements fail, we're in big trouble, and we're gonna have a lot worse on the flooding side.
Anybody else with questions?
Yeah, through the chair, through Council President Carlos, to the City Manager, and I got one for the DDA Director. The City Manager, could you give me a, or us a more detailed description, you had a general statement of the projects, but I want a more detailed, like what this entails on some.
Well, you broke up a little bit there, and I think the, it's.
I take care of the, oh, I'm sorry, can you hear me better?
Yeah, you just broke up a little bit, you were asking about more detail.
Yeah, I just want more detail on the, the items that you highlighted, like, for example, there are some generators that are diesel-powered, and are we gonna go to natural gas on those for some of the pump stations? Because we are mandated by the state, so that's like a hot issue to get rid of those and retrofit those, because the diesel is no longer a viable option for us.
Yeah, I've, I've asked Hennessy to, to take a look at doing natural gas generators. If, it's not so much that the diesel is, is bad, right? It's the, the holding tanks we have, and so.
Right.
It's, if we do have to go diesel, we will replace the tanks as well, and that's part of that $4 million. But, it would be, it would be my preference to go natural gas, it's more environmentally friendly, it, it's easier to manage, could be more cost-efficient. But as far as more detail, a lot of the general fund projects, there's not much detail to give, right? We're gonna, we need to rewrite the zoning code, so that's gonna be a consultant to come in and handle rewriting the ordinance. Doing the website upgrade, that's gonna be a project that, it's gonna take a lot of time, we're gonna have to issue an RFP, we're gonna have to do interviews for various firms. The biggest one, that's probably the most vague, is, is probably the one that we're working with the DDA on, and that's the placemaking, because there's, there's a whole lot of different elements that could come out of that. Whether it's, it's lighting up pedestrian alleys, giving people a place, a place to sit and enjoy lunch, a place maybe even to sit and enjoy some artwork, maybe find, find a way to highlight some of the historic downtown pieces. So, there, there is a little bit more vagueness there, but that's, that's kind of intentional.
Well, quite frankly, if I'm gonna spend this kind of money, I want a little bit more detail, I mean, and I'll just tell you where I'm at, just like you had mentioned something about the, the police department, about the bathroom, that's fine, all I wanna know is, so when I sit down, hopefully in six or nine months, and we talk about money again, some of these projects that we gave money to should be either accomplished or halfway through, and I don't want somebody to come back and say, well, you know, I, I gave that to the City Manager, I gave that to the Councilwoman, I don't know why that wasn't done, but I'm here back with my hand out looking for some money, because they never fixed this project, and I'm gonna go, well, I thought I did, because I gave you a general amount of money for the scope of the work. That's when I'm getting at, James, I'm not, I'm just trying to say, I would do the same thing when I bring my car in. You know, what are you gonna do for the car for $300? What specific, I mean, okay, we're gonna fix the rattle, what rattle? Are you gonna fix the door, the bag, what? That way I know if I come back again, I'm not fixing the same, I'm not paying for the same repair, that's what I'm trying to get at.
The, the official, at this point, the official. Right, at this point, the official projects aren't completely scoped out, right? This is, this is, we know that there's upgrades needed at the police department, here's $150,000, let's scope it out, figure out what we can get done, and go from there.
That's what I'm getting, just, just an idea where I'm spending the money, and the same thing with the DDA, I know the DDA over the years, Carl, and this, through the Council President, through the City Manager, and Carl, I think these will probably.
Councilwoman.
I've seen them spend a long-term goal about, if we're gonna put $125,000, quote, into the DDA area to help it, I wanna make sure that it, I wanna press work, and, and, and who's been, and he's kinda know where I'm talking about. I mean, that's all I'm going, I mean, as we get closer, maybe, that's fine, but just an idea what's happening, so that we don't, I guess what we're saying is if we build on the money that we're, we're putting in, so that we can go further with this, I'm getting that. I'm sorry, my internet connection's unstable, maybe you didn't hear all that, but that's what I'm looking for, and I guess, I don't think.
Carl, did you wanna say anything?
Yeah, yeah. Larry, let, let me just interject. You know, the fund that would be used for these placemaking activities in the downtown, you know, they would be projects that would be monitored and planned with the DDA and the EDC. If the council wants to also be involved in those details, we'd be glad to show that either with the council rep, Mike Higgins, I believe, is the council rep for the DDA, or, or others. You know, we, we, you know, James mentioned that there's several types of projects that, that we call placemaking that we could do in the downtown, and basically, it's trying to pick out sites that are vacant eyesores, and breathing some life and activity into them. As an example, there's a space that's about 25 feet wide, sort of an alley between the Moose Lodge and the Furniture Store. Right now, there's a homeless encampment there. Why is the homeless encampment there? Because it's a void, it's a dead spot, it's not lit, it's not active. We want to create activity in that space, actually, that, that space in particular could be very easily lit, but there could be a nice arrangement of furniture, there could be nice plantings in there. We're also talking about using the building walls as the canvas for some artwork. Again, lit up at night, you know, we're trying to create a buzz in the downtown, we're trying to entice businesses to make investments downtown, because they see that the downtown not only has some market potential, but it's also an excellent place to make those investments. You know, I'm not reciting stuff that we're just pulling out of thin air, this is, this is the state of the art now. You don't have a successful downtown unless you create a vibrant place, make it safe for pedestrians, have interesting spots and locations, and do something with blank spaces, and that's what we're, what we intend to do with that $125,000. And that's what we're, what we intend to do with that $125,000. And anyway, as I said at the outset, we'd be glad to share what we're doing and explain the projects in detail. We don't have anything near construction plans right now, so that's why we can't get that detailed at this point in time. Conceptually, yes, in detail, not yet, but you're not asking for something that's unreasonable. We certainly want to see, want you and all the council members to understand what those investments are, and, you know, we really feel strongly that there's going to be something that you'll be proud of.
Thank you, Carl. Mr. Kelsey, just remember, you were breaking in and out, just so you know, so it was kind of hard for us to hear, whatever your questions were. Thank you, Carl, for responding. Any other questions in regards to the American Recovery Plan Act?
Through the chair?
Councilwoman Ross, go ahead.
Thank you. James, unless things have changed, I understand that we're supposed to get these payments, we get half one year, is it next year, and then the year after, the other half?
We actually received the first payment already.
Oh, nice, okay. So then my next question would be, is how, how much time are they giving us to use it?
I believe we have until 2024.
Oh, nice, okay.
2024, 2025. We have some time to spend the money.
Okay, good.
But a few, a few of these things we want to do, and some of these projects are going to take a while. The pump stations are going to take some time, the retention basin is going to take some time, the animal shelter, all of it, a lot of it can be very time, but some of them, we really want to get rolling on soon.
Anyone else have any questions? Seeing none, but Mr. City Manager, I have a couple of questions. First one was, before your time, we had, I believe, Hennessy was going to give an estimate on the windows. Council passed a resolution to have the windows engineered, and we never heard any more of that, but that's here and there, there. But just to let you know, I don't know if a study was ever done. My next question, I don't see tree trimming on any of this, would that be considered infrastructure?
It wouldn't be considered infrastructure, and the tree trimming issue in the city hasn't been a lack of funding, it has been a lack of productivity from the contractor. Each year for the last couple of years, we did not spend the budgeted amount due to the contractor not getting an expected amount of work done. And so we didn't really think about adding more money to tree trimming, it's not that we can't do it in the future, but let's see how this new contractor does, see where they're at. They're apparently anticipating we're going to be caught up on the tree trim list by fall, so that would be a fantastic thing.
Very good, thank you. Anybody else?
Just the final, through the chair, a final, hold on, I just, we're going to meet on this again, because I'd like to get more detail before we go, maybe we're going to meet in two weeks on this, through the chair, the City Manager, to get more detail and finalize what we're doing, or is this the final plan? Because if it is, that's not where I'm going, I want to get more detail, so I'm just asking.
Yeah, we can certainly provide more details, and actually do an official resolution to approve at the first August meeting, but if you'd like to, if you'd like to send me an email or something with what specific projects you'd like more detail on, that way, because, because some of them, more detail, it's hard to put more detail to zoning code rewrite, you know, or animal shelter phase two, especially at this point, we've all seen so many, we've all seen the plans for the last couple of years of the animal shelter, and we generally know what we're trying to do there.
Through the chair? Thank you, James. Councilman Higgins, go ahead. Am I not correct in that each and every one of these plans, when they come to fruition, they're going to have to come to us?
Absolutely, we're going to have to come with, with the request to solicit bids, approval of projects, we're going to have, you guys are going to be seeing this a lot, each individual one.
Thank you. All right. James, is there anyone from the audience that want to have any questions, or is this open for council only?
I do see a member of the press, but I, I only see council and staff, council staff and some staff from Hennessy.
Mr. Chris Adams, you could send me a copy of your presentation, I need a little note, if you could email that to me, that would be greatly appreciated.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, there will be no further discussion. The study session is adjourned at 7:03. Carrie, do we need a supporter and a mover?
You don't need support, it's a study session, so there's no motion to adjourn, it's just [applause]
Very well, thank you.
And again, like I have in the past, I'm going to leave this Zoom meeting open, so you guys, if you want to, you can log out and log back in, but you don't have to.